Please. There we go. There we go. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the, excuse me, minutes from last commission meeting on Tuesday and then our budget meeting yesterday.
Right. Your second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Hold favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Bailey.
Mister.
About all that.
All right. We have some permits. New permits for a Roman Shetler Jr. at 1851 Soldier Road. We have one for an extension for a culvert from Michael Del Chiaro. I don't know how you say that. And that's the two new ones.
Nice.
And then I don't. Uh, Del Chiaro's is 2122 Jayhawk. And did I give you Shetlers? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Make a motion to approve these two culvert applications. Mr. Bailey has submitted to us. One location is 1851 Soldier Road. The other one is 2122 Jayhawk Road.
Right. Second?
Any discussion? Hold favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Then these are completed ones. Sarah Shepherd, 130th and Arrowhead. I don't have an exact address on that one. And then Paula Russell, 2286 Poplar.
I think they have books that will give you something to go by.
Yeah, absolutely. Now that I know. Yes.
Have you had people out there say they haven't seen it?
No, they, we've seen those books, but we hadn't seen the.
I understand.
Anything called out, but yeah, we'll read through there and.
Yeah. Well, it gives a lot of information up front.
Yeah.
I'll give you my. Give you my, uh, thank you.
Don't need that.
You don't need that. Okay.
Asphalting, um, we're still waiting to get the distributor back. Um, hope today or tomorrow. And then we're waiting on the rubber boots to come in. So.
Some, something I would like to, you to consider.
Yes.
When you get done with Lynn's chip sealing, et cetera. If there's any money left, we need to look at Jayhawk from the tracks to 230th. And 230th, Jayhawk to Candace, a chip seal. If there's any money left.
Right, I know he's gonna be over on 125th and go back and.
Oh, yeah.
And patch at Yale Road where he's got a tore up there on east of the lake. Hidden Valley Lake.
Those are two roads that, well, like Jayhawk, we did it 2013, so it's due for, you can see, you can see the, the black.
Start to see it start, yes.
So where's it start, Jim?
The railroad tracks to 230th, it'd be right at a mile.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can beat it pretty bad?
No, it's still good road. It just needs a new service. You can just tell it's 10 years old.
Yeah. It's starting to weather a little bit.
Yeah, starting to weather, no. Chip seal make it a good road for a long time.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We're looking next year probably on old 69 to probably chip and seal that again. Because it's been a long time since we chipped and sealed that rascal.
Right.
Six, seven years.
North going, yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
And then over on 235th, it's gonna have to have some chip and seal because it's starting to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Come apart a little bit.
I hope next year should be a real busy chip year.
Yes, should be.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
We really are.
We, we have a lot of opportunity to do some good maintenance there.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, you know, my priorities are 125th. And then I'm looking at 120th all the way through to Forest, uh, Spots in there.
Okay.
On Hackberry. Lot of traffic on Hackberry.
Right.
Well, no more than, I mean, it's, it's expensive, but chip seals is something we can do.
I wish we could've got to Hackberry.
We can do a lot of it, so, yeah.
Maybe we can get some of it. I know we went in there and patched part of it over from Hydeville West.
Right.
In that area where it tore up, tore out.
But I'm gonna have a couple of smaller areas next year to asphalt, but we're worried about that. I want them in front of your house.
My wife would be very happy with you. She needs it.
All right.
She looks me to bring that up and I'm like, no.
Story.
Tell her I brought it up.
Okay.
You've got a lot of ditch and you've got a lot of water problem out there.
Absolutely.
Story, story from 2005 when I was estate rep, somebody come up to me says, well, now you can get your road paving for your house. And I told him, I says, you know, that'd be the last road in Bourbon County.
I kept telling her, I'm not bringing it up.
Lot of houses out there, it hasn't been touched.
Yeah, there are.
I bet it hasn't been touched since day, day one.
Right. And when you guys done, done 230th, them trucks kinda come through there and that didn't help. And there's some other.
Yeah.
Trucks that are running through there that hasn't helped, but anyhow.
I bet it's 30 years old. I bet Clifton's right, so.
Or it are.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, speaking of 230th, you'd sent me a text. You'd visited with Matt Pettit on the Blonox seam.
Well, Matt Pettit is a gentleman that now works for VanKeppel.
Okay.
Spent 28 years with Road Tech.
Sure.
As well as the, the big paper people company out of Springfield.
Okay.
What is that?
I can't think of it, but I know.
Anyway.
They're big.
He got a lot of knowledge of asphalt. When I was walking with him, I took those pictures. I said, Matt, what's causing that? Cause that road's only just 3, 4 years old.
Right.
APAC who he worked for.
Okay.
For like 25 years. He said, that's result of the old paper we got rid of, Blonoff. In the center of that machine, the auger, he thinks were designed wrong. And it segregates it too much and lays it down in the center, then that asphalt separates on the road.
Really?
Yeah. He said, he said it doesn't time a Blonoff. He said, that's nothing more resolve than that old paper you got rid of.
Wow.
Okay. So does that have to do with the thickness as well? Or is it just?
Well, it's gotta have some to do. Cause you know, that paper, we tell it to lay 2 inches and it'll lay quarter inch. We always, every 100 feet, we try to catch it, but we, you know, it's not impossible to do that, so.
See, I think that may be part of the problem there is the.
Yeah.
Where the rutting.
Yeah.
Maybe, what is it, high towers there? There's a pretty good rut there. And if you look, it looks like the sub base is pumping up through that. And it looks pretty thin. So that's.
Places where it's breaking out is thin. But the picture I took is no, there's no rutting.
Okay.
It's just segregation.
Right.
Down there, down there on that old Jefferson Highway, and Jim and I looked at this more than I looked at.
Yeah.
You know, they laid a strip right down the middle of the road.
Right.
And then the, the sides of that thing was falling apart.
But as you read his comment, if we chip and seal that, we'll buy a lot of time on that, make it a nice road again.
On the rest of the road. I'm wondering if we need to go in on those rutting areas where it's super thin and clean them up a little bit. Maybe get some thickness put back in and.
Could.
And then chip and seal over.
It won't hurt it, yeah, so.
Yeah, I noticed you were using your, your planer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you can take that BOMAG out there and do the.
And go right down the center.
The rutting area that you're talking about, yeah.
Okay. Uh, we are crushing that Blake. Going to, uh, we'll work four 10-hour days crushing next week and one 8-hour day trying to produce more chips. Things are going well out there. Let's see, last week, um, we ended up getting 11 tubes put in. We did get the one on, uh, the Woodtop Bridge on 265th and Victory, and that's now opened back up.
Good.
Got those tubes in. I done some ditching and, uh, I, I gotta give credit to the mini excavator as well, along with the backhoe and the trackhoe. So having that piece of equipment helped out a lot, so. We were able to get, like I say, 11, and we're still putting them in again this week. So we're trying to get the tube list down for individuals needing their tubes replaced, so.
Down on, down in Newtown on Maple Road yesterday, and I saw them dragging in a, an old tube that they replacing in there. Was pretty sorry.
Pretty sorry, so. I mean, it leads me back to the mini. Do we wanna go out for bids for it? Do we not want to? What do we wanna do here, so?
Well, you, you know, I've been trying to think through this thing as far as I can. I want everybody to get their input on this. The mini seems to me it's gonna de, take a lot of load off of the, the backhoe.
It, it will. Take some of it off and.
And then also it's gonna speed up the operation on replacing culverts.
Absolutely. And cleaning out bridges.
Cleaning out bridges and.
And ditching.
And talking about bridges, I was down on 120th and Unity, the one that you fixed that bridge on.
Yep. It's gotta be cleaned out.
Looks like to me that you could go down and start a fire in that place and.
Right.
It'd be burning for days as much, much trees and stuff. Of course, it's a, it's a field road.
It, it is a platted road, I can say that. It is a platted road.
It is a platted road, but it's a field road.
I understand, low maintenance.
End of the road and there's a game.
Right. So.
Well, you know I'm gonna comment.
I know, absolutely.
Cause I have to. You know, I don't support a mini excavator. In my opinion, of being an equipment for 30 years. One you're using. I don't know if I'd call that a mini.
Right.
It's based on the weight classification. I think they're calling them mini cause it's got rubber tracks.
It's, it's the largest rubber track, yes.
Yeah.
Largest mini.
But anyway.
It's 80 horse.
Yeah. That's a, that's a big excavator. Uh, as you and I and Dustin talked a couple of months ago.
Sure.
You know, we, uh, our backhoe, even though it don't have a lot of hours, just getting some age to it. And the backhoe would've done what you're talking about out there on the ditching. You know, the intent of the, the backhoe is to support the new bridge crew. And if you have a mini out there, you're gonna have to have a skid loader do the finish work. I'm not saying it won't do the job, but it's kind of a luxury, in my opinion. We, we're gonna have to have a backhoe. We've got two motor graders coming up. This is a tool that, if you check throughout other counties, which it doesn't matter what happens in Bourbon, you won't find a lot of counties have it because it's a luxury. It's nice to have it. And we had a real good backhoe, but I told you then, I would support a huge mini. But I can't support a new one with the condition of our backhoe and two motor graders coming up. Cause two motor graders, half a million dollars. So.
Do you think they budgeted for the motor graders?
I don't, I don't think we budgeted for the motor graders yet, no.
Last year. Didn't this year.
Well, it's something that we'll go out for bid and make the first payment the next year.
My opinion is, I mean, I've talked to three or four different contractors. And, and they, they. One says one thing, one says another. It sounds, I mean, to them, what they tell me, it's like what they're used to using. I mean, as far as going out to bid, I don't know why it wouldn't, what, what does it hurt to go out to bid for a mini and a backhoe?
It would. It's, it's a lot of work if you don't tend to buy one.
Yeah.
You need to make that decision. Work, because it's a lot of bids for Eric, a lot of work, and it's a lot of work for the.
The guys bidding, yeah.
So they'll bring, they'll bring him over in demo and they'll work with him on specs, et cetera.
Well, we've, uh, we've done this before when I forbid, before I made a decision on whether we really wanted to or not. In fact, you know, when we do motor graders, we like to go to the factories and, and take a look at them for, for, you know, what the factories look like. And, and I was impressed with that, that organization or that effort that we did. It did give us a lot of insight.
Excavators are sold by weight classification, it's not by anything else more than that. And that machine, compared to what some folks consider mini excavator and some, that's double the size, but.
Which could be better, I mean.
Right.
It is, but we have, we have a big one sitting there.
It's a lot smaller than that.
Oh, yeah.
A lot smaller than the big one.
Yeah, that, that.
It's, you know, compared to.
I didn't say that. It's, the ones weighs 40,000 pounds.
Plus, this is rubber tracks where we can get on the asphalt, not tear it up as well.
One of the things we did a few years ago was we had a, a, a rubber tired excavator that we got rid of, but we were trying to use it for ditching, but it was too big. You know, you couldn't transport it anywhere, well, wherever you took it. You, you run about 12 miles an hour, but you couldn't, you blocked the whole road just cleaning up.
Right.
And we did use it some for, for cleaning out ditches. And, and that's why we had an, an excavator backhoe was to assist in cleaning up ditches.
Well, again, I hate to be negative here, but that mini, as you call it, excavator, it's not a good backup tool for the landfill. It's not a good backup tool for your loading salt on a stony knife. If you need a machine out to the quarry to load chips to bring in town. It's not a machine that.
But we'd still have our backhoe, so that machine would still be there. And two skid loaders. And two skid loaders. Seems like, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what's out there.
We got two skid loaders and, and a backhoe that sits out there. And then we have three other loaders, two for the rock quarry and one for the asphalt.
Yeah, but you're looking at a machine of real limited use, but.
So you, what do you, what do you say about limited use?
As far as?
An excavator mini backhoe or?
You, you can do so much with that. I mean, you can, you can dig with it. We can put culverts in, we can ditch with it. We can, we can get into areas that we can't get in with the backhoe. We don't have to set up in such a big area and block half the road or more with that. You, you just, you sit there, you're digging, you spin, you use your feet, you move. With the backhoe, you've got to dig, then you've got to lower down, move yourself or raise your outriggers and move yourself. It's just way more efficient piece of equipment, so.
I, I think one of the major differences Eric and I is talking about is, I'm talking about bridges and he's talking about culverts.
Yeah.
Well, the bridge is the same way. I mean, you can sit right up on that bridge and reach right over there. I mean, that's what, when you had the FEMA situation, that's what R2 used to go clean out all the waterways was a mini, is my understanding.
It was.
Um, and they were very, very efficient with that, so.
That's all they used pretty well.
Yes.
They took their trucks up there and took that, that thumb in there and just loaded it.
That's right. And your backhoe doesn't have a thumb, which, I mean, we could.
One of the operations that I've, uh, that she was told about was they'd go in there and they'd drag it out and, and then load it because they could get a hold of it with that thumb.
Right.
Why do you not support a huge one?
I'll support whatever, but I just wanna make sure that we have the piece of equipment cause that's what would be the best for public works.
Can we, uh, is there, is there any reason we can't table this till next week?
Oh, we can table it, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I just.
I mean, I, I, that would be, I would ask that we table this till next week.
Till what?
Till next week.
Okay. Very good.
Good.
When you, when you taking the mini back?
Whenever they come get it.
Okay.
So maybe they'll leave it another week.
That's.
Do you oppose a demo and a smaller one? A real mini?
We can, I, why would we want a smaller one?
Well, if you're welcome to maneuverability and things like that.
This, this one will do everything.
Everything you want.
Yeah, and plus it'll pick up the big trees and the big logs and.
So, why don't you, I'd like to go out and see it in, in.
Absolutely.
So let me know, maybe the other commissioners where you're gonna be, so we can go take a, watch, watch you clean out a bridge or, or replace a culvert or something.
All right.
I'd really enjoy looking at that and trying to give me more information.
Okay. I, I thought that's where we was going last week, but that's fine.
Schedule's looking good.
Absolutely, so we'll try again this week, if they'll leave it with us for.
True or false, though, I mean, to clean out a bridge, your big one's more effective. What do you have? Or its reach?
It depends on where the stuff is. I mean, that's a, that's a loaded question. And it depends on how big the, the low water bridge is. If it's one of the low waters, I can roll right up there with the.
I'm talking about a bridge.
Well, if it's a bridge, I'm gonna crawl down the side of it. I'm not gonna reach over to the, the top, so the mini can do that as well.
You can reach most of it from the top, that big one.
Depends on how big.
There's a, there's a bridge right around me or that we replaced that has three big tubes in it.
Yes, just to the south.
And that last store we had.
Yes.
That thing is clear full back down a long way.
And it's on our list. We should be there here in the next week or two.
Okay, I was gonna say.
It's, it needs attention bad. I actually have pictures on the phone of it. It's, uh, I don't know where all that debris came from, but.
Well, I do. It's down off those hills.
There's a lot of it. A lot, on both sides.
Well, there was seven inches of rain that came down through there, and it brought a lot of debris with it.
So.
Okay, we'll table it the next week.
Okay.
How, how would, let me go back to that question, though. How would we do that with the backhoe?
I'd use a big excavator.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So for the jobs that the big excavator needs, we use the big excavator. For the jobs that we can do with the mini, we'd use the mini. And for the jobs we could use the backhoe, we'd use the backhoe.
As you mentioned, it depends on the reach. That backhoe I can reach seven foot more than you can.
I don't remember the exact length or the reach length, but I'm.
Yeah.
They're fairly close.
Yeah.
So anyhow, we'll table it to next week.
Okay. And I'll put it on the agenda for next week, please.
You talked to me about the bridges. We did dig up there on Eagle Road inside Garland, or just right there before you enter Garland, at the water tower. There was some major failure, sub base failure there, so dug that up, rocked it. We'll, uh, asphalt it while we're down there and, and move on. And the crossroad tube there at, uh, 267th and Eagle was one of them that we did replace as well. So I know you had received some messages on that one as well.
Thank you.
Purple Wave, that is tomorrow. I wanna be very clear on that. I misspoke, but didn't misspoke. The odometer reading on there currently is 11, 823. The other, when you read clear down here at the very, very, very bottom. Let me find it. Somewhere here, it's actually 684, 425 on there. So wanna be very clear on that.
684,000.
Mm-hmm. So.
In my opinion, that's too many.
Well, that's what I wanted. The auction is tomorrow, so.
Okay, that's what, 800,000? 700,000?
That's a lot of miles.
It is, once.
It is.
We went back and, and.
Yeah, how long the information?
Well, read the fine print clear down at the very, very, very bottom.
The current, and the current, uh, bid is 28,000?
Yes.
I would recommend keep looking, but that's up to you guys.
See, said anything about the motor being gone through?
It, we can go over today and look at it. It's open viewing.
Where's it at?
Nevada.
My brother, my brother-in-law is a.
This side.
Over the road, well, he's a truck driver, he's a fertilizer.
Sure.
Has his stuff. I know he, uh, he overhauled, he has about 600, 700,000.
Yeah, I think about 700,000, usually the old Hallmark or something in general, but. And my wife, long time, it's a lot of mileage. I like to see us make a little better investment, lower mileage for the county for longevity, but.
That's fine.
Here.
I know it's hard to find.
That's why I'm, yes, they're hard to find, and.
Very hard.
The guy, the gentleman that's selling out, retiring, he's done work for me previously and takes very good care of his equipment. But that doesn't mean that the truck.
Right. What's it up to you now?
28.
28, that, oh, yeah, I see that. To odometer replaced at 680.
Yeah. And then you add the.
11.
On that, so right at 700,000.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So.
I'm glad you read the fine print.
Yes. So what do you wanna do on that? You made a motion before for up to 50 or 51, somewhere in there. So what, do you wanna stay with it? You wanna lower it? You not wanna mess with it at all?
I make a motion, we skip it because of the mileage in Oakley, Eric. Keep searching and something, lower mileage will be longevity with the county. But once we buy something, it's gonna last a long time.
Sure, absolutely, so.
Second.
And I, and I understand that they're hard to find.
Yep.
Today's environment. Yeah. That's a lot of miles to gamble on.
Yep. So. We'll keep looking.
I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hold favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Eric, have you, have you given any thought to new, is that just out of the park?
I haven't, I mean.
I don't know anymore.
It's, that's a.
Probably be way up there.
It's gonna be, I haven't looked at new prices, but I.
I don't either.
I can.
Well, I'd rather see us spend 100,000 for a new truck than 60 for an old one.
Oh, yeah, I know, we can't touch one for 100.
Can't get 100. I don't know, it might.
I haven't.
Can't get a hundred, I don't know, it might, it's just a thought.
I'd almost rather have a dump truck, another dump truck before buying a brand-new.
Yeah, it's just a thought, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what the new one's cost, so.
Look at the government side also.
Yes, right. Um, last thing, windmills, first windmill went up yesterday at twentieth and Birch in Berman County.
Twentieth and Birch?
Yep.
I did see that.
Yeah. So. You will start seeing them go up now. I don't know if I say daily, but weekly you will be seeing.
But it takes a lot of concrete, doesn't it?
That it did. That it did, and those cranes are huge, so.
You wouldn't have washed one yesterday?
Yes, yep. Yes, it, the, the track on the one was over eight foot tall on the track that was raised in the.
Yeah.
So anyhow, but, anything else?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the list is the health insurance contract. Susan, you got any words of wisdom?
I don't, not at this point.
Does this have to be done by Susan, you say September first?
I think it's September first. Genevieve.
Mm-hmm.
If it's Genevieve.
Okay, this is the non-state employer group contract with state employee health plan or S E H P. Our current contract is set to expire on December thirty-first at midnight. Uh, with this renewal, the contract taking effect on January first, two thousand twenty-two, twelve oh one. What's assigned and fully executed? My understanding, this is a three-year contract.
That's my understanding as well.
There is, there is the buyout clause, but it's quite pricey.
Very expensive.
Yes.
Well then, I think with Susan's help, possibly, if we go this direction, it will give us opportunity to really put forth and study what a self-funded plan means to the county and give us an opportunity maybe to start saving money if we want to go that direction. Now, I know some self-funded plans is really good, I know some self-funded plans, the county employees, it's the worst thing ever happens to them. So, but this would give us some time to really study what we need to do, and I could, I'm not talking about waiting until twenty twenty-four. Starting next year, the process with Susan's guidance to be in position to make some decisions the next time, but.
I do believe as a motion, and a discussion, we do start next spring, start looking, these over both self-funded and broker policies. Okay? So I'm in a motion to sign this contract. It's A T, S A T P contract that will be in effect starting January first, two thousand twenty-two, at twelve oh one A M.
I think Clinton's got some thoughts, I can tell.
No, I just, I just don't like the three-year.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, but we're up again, we're, you know, we're rock and hard place, so.
Like it's always.
Yeah, that's, that's a long time.
But we can start addressing it.
Well, a lot of things probably going to change within the next three years in the healthcare world. And we can really see the changes come.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion for Berman County to remain in the state pool for our health insurance and move forward and sign a contract.
Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Glenn, I need to ask to amend the agenda for a ten-minute executive session regarding non-elected personnel. I'm gonna let you re-dec- well, I got my glasses, so.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
You want to add it now?
Yeah.
Ten minutes?
Yes.
Uh, job performance or?
Job performance, I'd like to have the county counselor on the phone, I don't know if he's listening, he said it would be.
Well, I can text him.
I don't know if he's.
Says he's going to call in, but.
Yeah, he told me that.
He won't be able to.
Three commissioners, county counselor if possible, and Susan, please.
He, he told me to.
Okay.
To text him when we're ready.
We can invite out the counselors, so.
Okay. And we will return back to this room at what time?
Well.
We've got to make a motion for.
Yeah, we made the amendment.
Oh, this amendment agenda, I'm sorry, okay, so, here, second on amendment agenda?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, let me make.
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, I make a motion to go in executive session under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect the privacy dealing with job performance, be the three commissioners, Susan Bancroft and.
Possibly Justin Meeks.
Possibly Justin Meeks, if he's available by phone, be for ten minutes, we'll return here into this room at nine forty.
Here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Susan.
That's all right. Brendan's meeting composition.
I make a motion to resume normal session at nine forty.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No action?
Oh yeah, no action.
Where do I add something? Take care. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I need to tell tomorrow. Oh, that's fine, possibly in town this afternoon, so, yeah, okay. That's, yeah, perfect.
All right. S E K A A A. What group is that?
I don't know.
Southeast Kansas Aging Group.
Aging Group, that's the aging group, they changed the name, or the acronym.
Is it?
A G C O N A G E N or something like that?
Well, at Kendall, is that the Southeast Kansas Aging?
Area.
There you go, yeah.
Did we get a budget from? Meals on Wheels and things like that?
I'll do this. I'll do it.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
Nope. No. All right, I, I entertain a motion to, to point.
I figured since he was old.
Commissioner Beth to the, to the S E K A A A board.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next one.
Who is this?
David Everett with some, something to do with butterflies.
Okay.
Hello?
Is this David? Hello?
Hello?
Hello, for some reason, I don't begin, we need to have IT tech, I'll call him myself.
Yeah.
Once, twice now. See anything where there's a poor.
Hello?
There's one there.
Hello? Is this David?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Hi, this is Lynn O'Hare County Commissioner, Commissioner Beth and Commissioner Harris is here with me and we understand you have an issue or a issue on butterflies.
Um, yes, I do, uh, hold on a second, I'm going to stop your streaming, there seems to be quite a lag and it was confusing me. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm David Everett and I am here on behalf of the Butterfly Week Club of Southeast Kansas. We are a loose group at this time, we're formally organizing. Uh, our purpose is to help restore habitat for the monarch butterfly. Um, I don't know if any of you guys remember it, but I do when I was a kid on the farm, you know, you could see them off in the distance looking like a storm cloud, you know, and then they would just pass through and they'd be there hundreds and thousands of them. It was just amazing thing, and they're down to like two percent. Uh, so it's our aim to restore habitat, uh, to them and, um, we're not wanting anything from you guys right now. Uh, we're just letting you know of our distance and that in the future, we're going to ask your cooperation uh, to give us some spots in public lands, roadside, that kind of things uh, where we can plant thousands of various milkweed plants, uh, which are the only thing that the monarch caterpillar eats and is the biggest reason, uh, that they are in decline.
Okay. So this is, this is actually going to be a future project?
Um, yeah, we hope to be geared up by next spring, um, I've talked to two ministries because, uh, they could each have over five hundred, uh, seeping plants for us to go and then we'll be working on grow from seed on our own. Um, and next spring, uh, yeah, we hope to be, uh, planting milkweed in dozens of places, uh, around the county, hundreds of places, maybe.
Sounds, sounds good, you know, I don't know, uh, well, we'd be looking forward to having that conversation next spring. Do you, do you have something you want to add? Susan? Susan Bancroft is going to, has a, has a comment that she'd like to make.
We actually have a, on this, on the city of Fort Scott side, we have a parks committee that has been talking about this particular, um, thing and we have a park, um, Second Street Park that we would like to do something like this in. So, um, be sure to reach out to both entities because I think we would definitely want to participate as well.
Yes, Susan is the finance director for both Berman County and the city of Fort Scott. And she, she says that they've been discussing this and that she's recommending that you also reach out to Fort Scott because they're looking at the Second Street Park to possibly do some, some, uh, work in that area, so.
Yeah, that would be good, that city though, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, that city, they would, they would.
Yeah.
They would like to be involved in that also.
Yeah, well, I would also invite any of you who might be interested personally in joining and assisting us and getting a little sweat on your brow with us. Um, please, uh, any of you give me a call, um, you're feel free to pass my phone number out to anybody you know who might be interested in.
Okay.
And, uh, and, uh.
I'll have, I'll have the county clerk put your telephone number, this is David Everett and his phone number is.
Yeah, it's David Everett.
Yeah, and his number is six two zero, six four four, eight two one seven, and this is on, and this is on monarch butterfly migration.
Well, I appreciate it a lot and, uh, your, your commenter that you just had, I didn't catch her name. Uh, uh, if, if she could give me a call, that would be great, I'd, I'd really like to talk more about that.
And her name is Susan Bancroft.
Susan Bancroft, okay, well, Susan, please give me a call and let's talk.
Very well.
All right, well, I thank you for the opportunity, uh, we will be getting back when you, when we have, uh, things a little more solidly planned to know exactly what we want to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
You bet. Goodbye. Let me, uh, text Justin, we got some things that he wants to go over. go over.
I just have two quick questions if you wanna amend to that agenda. Or amend meeting to, to ask my two quick questions.
Yeah, I called, I talked to him last night. He's feeling better.
Yeah, he said this morning he's gonna call in today.
Yeah. Told me last night.
Paul brought my deal in there. That bitch just went maw.
Your eyes watering.
Yeah.
Lynn, I only have two questions if you want to.
Sure, we're gonna amend the agenda to allow you to speak. I move we amend the agenda to, to allow the public officials come in in front of the county councilor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. What you got, Laura?
I just have a couple of questions. One, I know yesterday you guys had a budget workshop. I'm just wondering if, when we will know whether or not our budgets that we presented will be accepted. And two, do we know when we're going to get the audit? Back? Sid?
I made a call this morning, so I'm waiting for a return call.
Okay.
She's gonna talk about the budget on her time.
Okay.
Right, we're gonna have a public hearing on our budget on September seventh.
September seventh.
Neutralize this thing. So, this could answer your question on, well, what's your budget? What we want to fund it. Now, I don't think we cut anybody's request.
Pretty sure you've got what you asked for.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. I do.
I got it.
Okay, good with that?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thanks Laura.
The other I can try to find is the house phone.
Have that, I'm gonna.
Well, I'll try to find the house phone, I don't know.
What's that?
The house phone.
Okay.
I don't know Shane has.
I might have that too. He called me once but I didn't fly again. Was that a nine one three number?
That's, no, that's his cell phone.
Oh, that's another one.
It's six two oh two two three number. It'd probably be a two two three number. Hey Shane, do you have, do you have Justin's, the house number?
Two two three thirty nine twenty. Maybe.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that's where he's at.
I'm gonna take a short break.
Uh, okay. No big deal. The, oh, you need to, you need an executive session? Right, 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 okay. Well, pretty quick. We're trying to wait, well, we're trying to get all the meets right now, but we can, so. Okay, sounds good.
Susan, how's your nephew?
Good. Good. And? Had a better day today?
My oldest nephew is eight. Which will be seventeen in September, he's six three, one eighty. And my other one, which is a freshman, six three, two eight. So, Hayden and his other one. Want to get some practice.
Yeah, he's capable.
Work my oldest fairly. My little brother's not supposed to pull me down. He's got a hundred pounds on him.
That's great.
He'll practice. A young male.
Yes, I'm.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, he does it for me too.
Yeah. And hold.
Okay, no big deal.
Any fishing counts?
Appreciate it.
No, we've got two scheduled in September. Looking forward to that and.
Maybe they'll cool around a bit.
I hope so.
Oh man.
My schedule will start hunting September fifteenth.
That's coming pretty quick.
Looking forward to it.
How's it working out there? Can you read it?
Spotty. Was going to want to handle their under drought. Bad drought.
Last two, no deal. Lot of western, you know, stuff. How's that?
That's his cell.
Damn, the nature of this last one.
That's Justin's cell phone.
Horned ones that cut into the yard. I mean, they ate that backyard tub. Bear, a fish here. They left the weeds.
Tore it out. They won't ever eat the weeds.
Nah. I had it moved in one year. It's stripped my garden.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Right, anyway, he doesn't, yeah, well, he doesn't have service where he's at, so. Trying to call the house, but that two to five, that'd be his cell phone.
Did you have Shane?
He's at his mom's house.
Is that who's talking?
Uh.
Yeah, that, that seven four zero, like six two oh? So, that's, that's her cell, yeah. Okay. Yeah, no kidding. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'll give that a shot, so. Uh, thanks. Hey Laura, this is Cliff, how are you? Good, good. We are at our commission meeting and we were trying to get hold of Justin. Oh, perfect. Okay, perfect. I don't know about that, but thanks. Thanks Laura, goodbye. She, that does work. He should have cell phones around.
Okay, it's a little clammy as hell.
I tried. I'm gonna take it outside when it won't work. Or maybe I have to pop this in there.
We don't need it 'cause it's not working. Can't fully, what do I, I couldn't hear it. It never worked to be honest. Second time it's happened, there's not, I didn't, there wasn't a mute on this thing.
Oh, well.
She on time, did she tag, was she on time? Or like a four?
She had already left, she dropped him off and left. That's all right, we got something else to do. Make a motion that we amend the agenda to add an executive session. How long?
Twenty minutes.
Uh, hang on again. Oh yeah, nevermind.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to have an executive session under case size seventy five forty three nineteen, B twelve, to discuss matters relating to security measures if the discussion of such matters at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures related to.
I bet this is him. Hello? Hello? Okay.
Related to just that the information could pose a security risk for the county. Be three commissioners. Brian Allen, Shane Walker, Susan Bancroft. And it will be for twenty minutes. We will return here at ten twenty two.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hit the button. Always forget.
I make motion to resume normal session in ten twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. I make a motion, I'd like to amend the agenda for another executive session. Be for ten minutes, personal matters.
Second.
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 Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion to an executive session under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Will include job function and performance. The three commissioners, Susan Bancroft and Ashley. And we will return here at ten thirty-three.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It'll go to slow.
Make a motion to resume normal session at ten thirty-three.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here, we get over Justin.
Nope.
Well, we can't go in for attorney-client privilege.
I can call Kale's office and have him run over there and tell him to answer his phone.
Yeah.
You want me to do that?
Sure.
Hey, this is pointing to that. Can I get one of you to run over again off on Justin's, when that was happening. There's only one call me. Thank you.
We forgot to say no action.
No action.
No action, sorry.
Yeah.
No action, no action.
Thank you, thank you, Ann.
And she'll, it shouldn't take her too long to take care of that.
Gonna move Susan up while we're waiting, or are we gonna wait?
Broke down English pointer. The reason you grab a tape recorder. Thank you.
He can go ahead and amend the agenda, then he calls in.
Yeah. I make motion to amend the agenda, allow Susan Bancroft to jump ahead of the county councillor comment while we wait for the county councillor to call.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you grab those sheets, Lynn, from my desk?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, pass those around, please. This is just the publication that I'm gonna publish on Saturday for the revenue neutral rate hearing that we will have on the seventh. So it basically is just showing our changes that we're making. So, that's required by law. So, Kendall, can you publish that for me?
I can.
Okay, okay, perfect. Yes, I can. So, that's all, I just need a motion so that we can publish that and move on.
This follows the number you shared with us.
That is right, that's correct.
Two something mill drop, two and a half almost.
Mm-hmm, two and a half mill decrease, yeah.
Perfect, that's great. Citizens should be happy. Two point five mill drop.
We already made a mo, I mean, we need to make a motion for them to publish this? Or we already did that, didn't we? So, we don't need a motion.
And we are gonna have our, kind of carrying on the revenue neutral rate on September the seventh.
Next Tuesday, is that what that is? Yep.
So, I make a motion to move our normal meeting to Tuesday, September seventh, for the commission meeting.
I, can I request, request an amendment to that? Let's move our meeting back to Tuesday permanently.
You wanna make it permanent?
Yes.
Okay, well, eliminate, eliminate the executive session then.
Okay.
All right.
I make a, I need to make a motion?
I retract my.
Okay, I make a motion, move the county commission meetings back to Tuesday until further notice.
Second.
We know what we're doing around here.
Who's on first?
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you move the commission comment up? I can get mine over with.
You can do it.
I'd like to amend the agenda to allow us to move the commission comment ahead of the county councillor comment time.
Here, second.
Second, sorry.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
What I have here is a request from Bourbon, Allen, Neosho, rural water district number two. They serve extreme portions of the western part of Bourbon County, like Bourbon Island Lake. They're wanting to start a project, they have five hundred and forty active meters, there's twenty-six of them in Bourbon County. What they're requesting that they update their meters to the electronic type, they read them, they're losing one point six million gallons per month because of their meters. Now I'll hand out this information here in just a minute. It's a really good program. And you'll see, if you look to, let me get back my microphone here. At page four, you'll see the total cost of the project. The last page is Bourbon County's part eighteen thousand two fifty-one point zero five, and it really goes in detail, the meters we're putting in place, et cetera, that's some new software, a third of a cost of a storage bin, et cetera. They're trying to recapture that one point six million gallons a month that they're losing. That's a lot of water. So, they have requested that we consider the American Rescue Plan Act of using eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and a nickel to help them do that project in Bourbon County.
So, I know we'd asked this question before, can we use the ARPA funds for that?
Yes.
Verifying.
Well, it's really a benefit to Bourbon Island Lake, it was western folks.
And when are they wanting to do this?
Pardon?
When are they wanting to do this?
This fall.
This fall.
They've already submitted a request to Neosho County and Allen County also, which they're paying the biggest part of, 'cause they've got the biggest part of the servers.
Where are we standing on ARPA funds, Susan, do you know? 'Cause we were a giveaway, eight hundred thousand plus, mother.
You've got about four hundred thousand left. And I don't know if this is something that you would wanna consider, is them, you know, at least sending a financial statement to you so that you can verify, you know, the need? That might be something that I would suggest, you know, cash balances and a financial statement.
Yeah, a lot of water districts have plenty of money.
They do, they do.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I just, I just, it's a suggestion.
I know our water district has plenty of money.
Yeah.
I mean, at least they pay their people.
Anyway, I'd like to share that with you folks, I've done that, and Susan get involved and review it, and I'll give her a copy, see if it's something that we wanna do or not, and talk about it in a week or two.
So, we can put it on the agenda for next week?
That's quick enough for you, next week.
Yeah, do you want, do you want me to request financial statements?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I can, I mean, yeah.
No?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, because if we approve this, we do have a real water here in Bourbon County itself that will come forward, probably make some requests, which is okay, if that's what we wanna do, but anyway, I'd like for us to review that and talk about it next week.
Yeah, I have an, an idea for changing the motion to change the meeting, I think, next week, to the thirty-first instead of the first. Get it all back on Tuesday. I've got a conflict on the first.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to change next week's meeting to the thirty-first as opposed to the first.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's Tuesday.
All in favor?
So, we're back square, right?
We're back square, man.
Good.
And this worked out for another individual, too, that had a conflict. So...
Ah, it's ringing.
Dustin, he's texting me, so I think he's expecting. He hasn't said permission.
And he hung up on me.
Huh?
You're fired. You clean it out, okay. Well, I'm only one, the other two might, they might not want that.
So, I think the only executive...
Yeah, okay, are you, we are, we're ready for county councillor comment, do you have a comment?
Second session, attorney-client privilege and your personnel.
Okay, yeah, Lynn has got one of them down, I think.
Yeah, attorney-client privilege.
Attorney-client privilege, attorney-client.
Privilege.
Personnel first with Susan, Susan, okay.
I need her in there for the attorney-client privilege also.
Job description, job performance, okay. Okay. Okay.
How long?
Okay, so the first one is personnel matters, and you want for fifteen minutes. Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker for a second so you can listen. Okay, I make a motion, councillor with councillor Meeks here, KSA, to go into executive session, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one, to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy related to job description, job performance, job function, HR issues. Will be for fifteen minutes. We will return here at eleven fifty-nine.
I need, I need Susan, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that, three commissioners, county councillor Meeks and Susan Bancroft.
Ten fifty-nine.
Huh?
Ten fifty-nine.
Ten fifty-nine, sorry, I missed the eleven. Return at ten fifty-nine.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to return to normal session at eleven oh six with action.
Here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd make a motion to allow Chairman O'Hara, Susan Bancroft, and county councillor Justin Meeks to investigate a employee, possible employee, uh,
Matter.
malfeasance matter. Um, and if, uh, see fit to, uh, move forward with a outside firm to do that investigation.
And also to investigate an HR issue.
Oh, yes, and it, and, yeah, and to investigate an HR issue.
Second, second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so we're down to.
Public.
Well, we did the public comments once.
We did?
Yeah, no, we didn't.
No, we didn't do public, we moved elected.
Yeah, we moved elected, okay, public comments, I don't have any.
I didn't have any, buddy.
And we already did the elected official comments. Commission comments.
Ready to go.